Welcome to a broadcast of the recent Lorraine County Commissioners General Meeting. Unless otherwise announced, meetings are held Wednesday morning at the Administration Building, 226 Mid-11th Avenue, 4th floor, downtown Alariah. These are public meetings and you are invited to attend. Agendas are posted prior to the meeting at www.lorainecity.us. Click on Departments to see the Commissioners page, then click on View Agenda.
Good morning, can we stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning and welcome to the July 15th meeting of the Lorraine County Board of Commissioners. Commissioner Lundey, you're going to do the serenity prayer for this morning.
Yes, I will bow our heads. God grant me the serenity to accept the things I cannot change, the courage to change the things I can, and the wisdom to know the difference.
Thank you. Ted, you have the dog today?
My dog?
Yep. The shepherd he wanted to bring refused to come. Beautiful.
Our featured dog this week is a blue osse pit mix, male, about a little over a year old. He's got a great personality.
You need a microphone, Ted?
Oh, I need the microphone.
You're discombobulated today.
You think he did it right, too?
Yeah, how many years you been doing this?
It's only 11 years. Give him a little.
He's warming up.
Our featured dog this week is a male blue osse pit mix. He's got a great personality. He's looking for a home. He's a little over a year old, but he's just a great dog. He'll be available for adoption on the 17th. How many dogs we have, Tim?
Thirty-one.
We have thirty-one dogs, so please stop by and find a pet for your family. We're starting to fill up. Come on, guy.
Beautiful dog. Blue eyes, I love it. I'll see you Sunday, Tim.
Fidos, huh?
Yeah, Fidos is having their fundraiser this Sunday, so we're going to have a good event. Half the proceeds from the event go to our kennel.
Beautiful.
For Spay Neuter programs. Yeah, Fidos is having their fundraiser this Sunday, so we're going to have a good event. Half the proceeds from the event go to our kennel.
Beautiful.
For Spay Neuter programs. Madam Clerk?
Under Resolutions Number One, Investments?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, Miskowski?
Aye.
Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
Mr. Kelo?
Aye.
Corporations?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, Miskowski?
Aye.
Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
Mr. Kelo?
Aye.
Advances and repayments?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, Miskowski?
Aye.
Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
Mr. Kelo?
Aye.
Requisitions?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, Miskowski?
Aye.
Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
Mr. Kelo?
Aye.
No travel, bills?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, Miskowski?
Aye.
Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
Mr. Kelo?
Aye.
Under the Commissioners, authorize various personnel actions as indicated on the summary sheet for employees within jurisdiction of Lorraine County Commissioners?
Mr. Cortez?
Thank you, Madam Commissioner. I do have a few personnel issues that I'd like to discuss with the Board, possible hiring at the Collection Center and Golden Acres, possibly Job and Family Services. Also, I'd like to discuss ongoing litigation. Both of those topics will allow under Sunshine Act for Executive Session discussion, so to ask at the conclusion of a regular Board meeting, we go into Executive Session, we talk about those two issues. Thank you.
I approve waiver of the reading of the minutes of July 8th.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, Miskowski?
Aye.
Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
Mr. Kelo?
Aye.
Adopt the fiscal year 2016 Lorraine County tax budget and approve as submitted in the tax booklet.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, Miskowski?
Aye.
Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
Mr. Kelo?
Aye.
Under Workforce, renew the MOU with Community College Able Consortium to provide academic skill supplement for employment and training services to participants deemed in need, staffed by Ohio means jobs, Lorraine County effective retroactive to July 1st, 2015 through June 30, 2016, at a cost not to exceed $21,948.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, Miskowski?
Aye.
Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
Mr. Kelo?
Aye.
Mr. Cortez?
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Commissioners, excuse me, I do have actually three issues this morning that while not urgent, I want to pass to the Board. And two of them have to do with services, the Job and Family Services. One is for our security, to renew our security agreement with our security company, have to go out for RFPs. And the other is for, make sure I got it right. This is the security officer one. And this is for job retention and placement services. So these are just our request proposals that need to be advertised for Job and Family Services. I didn't get them into the package. And also, I have one for community development, for CDBG funding for a sewer project. We actually got three bids on this one.
Oh, great.
Yeah, you know, Don had to personally go out and drag people out to the site, but we have three bids. It's a home repair that's been waiting for somebody and we just need to get it done. Again, I apologize, but we're working so lean and quick around here, sometimes I just miss the target on the agenda, and I'd like to get those three issues approved.
So the first one is advertise our request for CO bids for security officers of Job and Family Services, notice being the journal on July 20th and 27th, and open at 2:30 in August 4th.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, Miskowski?
Aye.
Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
Mr. Kelo?
Aye.
The second one is advertise a request for proposals for classroom training, job placement, job retention on the John Training Program for JFS, advertise in the Chronicle on July 20th and 27th, and open on August 4th at 2:00 PM.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, Miskowski?
Aye.
Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
Mr. Kelo?
Aye.
And the third one is award the agreement with Bromhelm Engineering and Surveying Company for design and preparation of bid specifications, bid tabs, review, and project inspections for CDBG-funded ADA walkway installation project in North Ridgeville in the amount of $6,360.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, Miskowski?
Aye.
Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
Mr. Kelo?
Aye.
Go ahead, Don.
Pardon?
Excuse me, Board. The, uh, thank you, but there should be one awarding the sewer separation, I believe was the one Mr. Cortez was talking about where we'd gotten the three bids to...
That wasn't...
Yeah, that was awarding the design...
I looked at the top of it and I saw community development.
Oh, there is another one attached to the bottom of this.
What is that, Theresa?
Award a contract to premium sewer and drain.
That's the one.
Sidewalk I wasn't so worried about. I guess we'll do both of them.
Okay.
I'll go through the sidewalk next week, Don.
That was fine, but thank you.
You're welcome. Go ahead. Oh, okay. Richard and Denise Fortner to receive grant assistance from CHIP, 14 home repair in the amount of $3,850 in Sheffield Lake.
For sewer replacement?
For a sanitary lateral replacement.
Okay.
Fifteen bids were, fifteen bids were sent, three bids were received.
Okay, so moved.
Second.
Discussion.
I just wanted to thank Don again for going the extra mile on getting the bids. That's always a good thing.
Right.
Would you want a second then?
Second.
Okay. Any further discussion? Miskowski?
Aye.
Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
Mr. Kelo?
Aye.
Now, don't be upsetting Ms. Quirk and talking at a turn.
Yeah, no. I thought I said nothing. It shows I didn't turn. Madam, may I speak?
You know, we've been still challenged with CDBG and CHIP projects, getting vendors out there. We're going to try to put something on this fall, have some kind of presentation so people can come in and start looking at the requirements again. I don't know what's keeping them away. If it's a lot of business out there and they don't want the smaller jobs, I'm happy about that, but it still gives us a hard time with the compliance. The last thing I want to do is jeopardize our funding again like it was a few years ago. But Don's been in contact with the state, they understand our situation here. That's why we changed the resolutions a while back to include how many invitations to bid that were sent out and how few returns. And we've gone, we've gone out a second and a third time, and sometimes the original person that bid doesn't bid again. And that leaves us with a problem also. But we'll continue to try to get the word out to the vendors in Lorraine County about this work.
Are the requirements very strict and a lot of red tape when it comes to these types of projects? Is that keeping people away, do you think? Maybe if we did have like a meeting, just tell people how easy it might be?
Um, the requirements themselves are not. Maybe one of the things that holds them back is just per the rules of the program, we don't pay until the work is complete and approved. And so for some of the small companies, especially if it's fairly intensive, their cash flow might be impacted. That's a common problem. The biggest thing we've been working on and with the Auditor's Office and everything, we've been turning checks around in under two weeks, and we've gotten them in. I think the one time I about fell out of my chair, they turned one around in a day, and I don't know how that one happened.
Yeah, good timing.
You know, and things, things have improved down there. They got a large volume, too, and they've had reductions down in the Auditor's Office, too.
But they've, everyone's been doing well, but it's still from the time we award and they start the work till the time they get their check, you know, that's four or five weeks, and for several of those weeks, that contractor is out the cash.
What if we were to advance funds and then use general funds for the program, then reimburse ourselves when the CDBG funds could be paid?
It could be possible. I'd need to look into it, make sure that we're protected as well as the homeowner, because we are really, in this case, the bank. And if there were a problem with the work, it's just making sure we get that money back. Not that we've really, in my five years here, I've had two problems and we've been able to resolve them both.
Well, still the ability to give them half down towards...
Right.
Well, that's what I'm thinking of.
Yeah, if we're...
What if we, what if we pulled, you know, a few ten thousands and we advanced, we did draws on that, like we do on a bunch of our projects, let them do a 50% draw, and then the funds would be available quicker, and when the work was completed while we did the paperwork, and then we could send the check to the general fund. What do you think, Lisa?
It's not completely done.
Yep.
Probably just have to have a resolution.
They have been, but it's just not that. It's actually, when you got an $8,000 furnace going in, and you got a small company, and they're going to wait X weeks, and that's a lot. You're a small businessman.
That's what I said. Actually, I just talked with Don this morning. We were standing out talking, talking about the travels and perils of small business.
Why don't we, why don't the three of us just have a quick conversation later in the week and see if we can't come up with something to expedite that? If that's, if that's a barrier, let's find a solution to that barrier and see if we can do a little better.
Yeah, that's the last one I can think of that we really have, because the paperwork, you submit a bid just like you would on any private job. Now, maybe, you know, ours is on a form, and then you've got to sign your name a couple extra times, but otherwise, you've got to be licensed bonded, current on your taxes, all things that...
But I thought the CHIP, the CHIP stuff was a little bit more challenging.
Uh, it is, in that we've got to, the biggest thing for us is really getting the homeowners qualified. You need a home that has several issues, is income qualified, but then the home can't be so bad that with $35,000, we can't bring it all the way up to code, where what, what we find is probably 20% of the homes we walk into, we have to walk away because the houses are too far gone for our program.
Is that something that legal should take a quick look at, just to make sure we're in compliance with the way the program operates?
Well, we'll put something together and then we'll, we'll talk to you.
I like trying to find the solution. I never understood why any contractor quite candidly started any job without at least a third, you know, a third down to get some things going. Government operates differently, though.
Right.
Normally, you do the work and then you get paid, but if there's a way that we can, you know, address that. Kind of a related note, I was talking to somebody in the building industry recently, and they were telling me, probably in regards to the lack of quotes that we sometimes get of how difficult it is to find contractors to work on building their homes.
Mm-hmm.
And they said during the recession, unfortunately, a lot of folks left or basically went out of business, and so it's taken much longer to even build a home these days, or to get people to even step forward to help somebody when they're building a home.
Yeah, sometimes we do roofs on the, on the CHIP, and typically, if you've done a roof on your own home, the contractor will want you at least to pay for the materials upfront to do the work. We don't even do that, so...
That's what I'm saying. The world's changed from a decade ago where it was fluid and, you know, those...
A lot of them don't have lines of credit anymore like they used to. Even coming out of the recession, the lines of credit, either if they do exist, they're greatly diminished, and mostly they don't exist for small contractors, so they're actually shoveling out of their own pocket. So let us, give us a chance. I didn't recognize as a Barry before.
My autobiograph.
It's all about Ted again?
Nope. Picture perfect, that's just the way things have changed. Contractors, so the guys who are trying to bid these jobs, they need the cash flow for the materials and...
Let's have a conversation.
Yeah, that'd be a great idea.
Okay.
With that, we've got Fidos on Sunday. I don't know if there's still tickets available. I know Michelle's been doing that, and of course, tonight, the Commissioners will be out at the Best of Lorraine County. I was remiss in the last two meetings not to say something about that, but it's a great event, and we did over 700 people last year. Hopefully, we'll do more this year, but I don't know, the weather's looking pretty bad for us this evening, so. Great time to see all the wonderful things that Lorraine County has to offer. Food's usually amazing, and I think last year, we had the, that small, they wanted to be a startup, I'm not sure they ever got busy down in Lorraine, the classic cocktail mixes and...
Oh, they're actually remodeling a building, right?
Are they doing it?
Curtain Page are remodeling a building on Broadway, correct?
The, you know, we had some contact with them, but they, they, they lost touch with us. We still wanted to be involved with them and see what we could do to help them as a startup.
I talk to Curtain Page about once a week.
Once you see we can't reengage with them, but that would be really great to see. They were doing all the...
All the classic cocktails, correct.
All the bitters and the, and the mixes, all homemade. It was, it was very...
Actually, the beer was from a local brewery, Franklin Brewery here in Alariah, and then they were doing the classic cocktails, and they're actually, they are remodeling a building in downtown Lorraine, the old Hart Jewelry Company, which is one, it's the building just north of the alley between the Palace and Eagles. Great for, I was there actually a couple of weeks ago when they had a little get-together to show off what they're doing, so...
When you, when you go place, you'll see that, you know, there's this place that just do bitters and syrups and mixes and things like that, and they're all pre-made, you know, fresh, but you know, there's, there's a good, there's a booming industry in that. Hopefully, they get going in that. With that, I'll yield the counsel. Thank you.
Commissioners, I do have five matters of pending litigation. Fortunately, three of them should be very short, but I would like to discuss those with you in the Executive Session.
Mr. Cortez, yesterday, you and I had a quick conversation about the Land Bank and the City of Lorraine selling the lots off.
Yes.
After that, I was down in the Treasurer's Office, and I ran into that couple, that, that first house that we demoed over in Sheffield Township on 254...
Alariah Township.
Or Alariah Township, I'm sorry.
Yes.
Yeah, they were down there talking about, they were trying to acquire that property, the next door neighbors, remember?
Yep.
So can you just give an update? People are kind of confused as to why, you know, before, we didn't own the properties, now we do own the properties, and what we're doing with those properties.
Okay, well, we still own very little property. I met with Chris Panowski and Pat Metzger last week. We went over all of our outstanding liens, properties that were ripe for acquisition, properties that were, that seemed to be repurposable, and we're working on it. That lot is on, on the list. We currently have 240 properties that we've worked on, we're adding another 120 that we're, that we're going to be working on this summer. The priority's been, as you know, to OFA, to gain those additional properties, to keep the federal funds flowing. Where, where our priority right now is demoing those properties, and first, we have to abate them, then get them demoed, have to get them inspected. But Chris is also working on obtaining the lots that I mentioned earlier, that we think have, have the ability to be side-lotted, purchased. I'm not really huge into community gardens unless, unless one of the cities indicates that they want the parcel to be a community garden. I think that we need to work closely with them. The concept sounds great until you've seen, you know, without, without proper regulation and oversight, what happens to those lots. They look worse than they started out with looking. I know this property, and this piece of property, Avon, that the school was interested in, they want to obtain, we're working on that. It's a slow process, because all of the properties that we've demoed up until OFA have been bank-owned, resident-owned, taxpayer-owned, however you want to qualify it. We went in there under the nuisance ordinance, and we've demoed those homes for the cities as their agents, and then we've leaned the property, but we have not taken possession. And we own a few that have been either abandoned or donated to us, or the banks have worked with us, but those aren't the ones right now that people are actually trying to obtain from us. It's going to take several more months before we start having those properties available. I gave an outline to Mr. Metzger last week of some possible procedures that I want him to vet through counsel about how we can dispose those lots in the easiest manner possible. Currently, under the restrictive guidelines, we would have to auction those lots. I'm looking, I believe that the Land Bank law allows us to actually individually sell them with a priority to sideliding them to homeowners first, or to enter into development contracts with folks that may want to build. I don't find that to be an outcome right now that we're going to achieve, building on these lots. A lot of them are non-conforming. A lot of them still have neighborhood problems where they are, but they're, they're a piece of the mosaic to improve those neighborhoods, and we need to continue. So it's going to be a long, long slug. As you heard me tell the Township trustees when we were out there, we're only scratching the surface of the problem. This is going to be a decades-long fight to reinvigorate some of these neighborhoods. You can't leave them with empty abandoned lots. And one of the things we've done is we've taken out all the curb cuts, we repaired the sidewalks, we go to the four corners of the property so that at least you have a presentable green space. If you leave the curb cut in where the old driveway was, people end up using the lot as a, you know, as a parking lot, or they back in there and dump junk. So, you know, we've tried to go in there and aesthetically make those areas acceptable. The other thing I want to work with the cities, there's no reason why they can't green some of those lots, put a couple trees on them, and let a little bit of a natural feeling come back to break up the neighborhoods a little bit. And that would take actually doing it the right way, you know, rather than just letting it grow back in 15 years, going in and purposely planting species of trees and shrubbery that would be indigenous to the area, and making a small park-like area. We, we need to sit down and go to that next level after we accomplish the goals that are necessary with OFA. The good news about what's going on with the OFA grant is that the bids are coming in less costly than we anticipated in the beginning for these homes, so we may be able to go out and do another round of procurement of homes that are deficient and, and put more resources into the core cities to take down a few more, a few more dangerous places. But we're going to have more conversation at the Land Bank with that. I think that the bulldozers are rolling next week. I think Mr. Metzger will be in touch with you, because we've got our signs out, we want to, want to have a big pop, let them know that we're, you know, we're still in business. We've been delaying because of the priorities of the funding and how we had to spend it, and we still have, we still have DRETAC money coming behind that, plugging all the holes. So it's, it's going to be a good summer and good fall for Lorraine County, and let those homeowners know when they call you, they, let's, you know, have them call, Pat, make sure they're listed in the folder with the property, and we will do our best to make sure that they obtain that, especially the people on North Ridge. They're already maintaining that property, they're mowing it, they're...
The problem with that property, though, well, they, they'll, there's a lien on the property with the demo and all that, and tax liens or whatever, so that property, a vacant piece of land's going to go for like $30,000, or will it go to sheriff's sale for the two-thirds value of what the property is valued at?
Well, it'll go to the Land Bank for nothing, once we, we exercise our liens on the property, and then all outstanding debts on the property are expunged. That's, that's the way the law was written. It's a great and powerful law. I think Commissioner Lundey was down in the legislative, when they did that. It really, really has tremendous ability to, to, to improve the community if it's exercised. Some people are fearful of actually going forward with all the authorities that the Land Bank legislation allows, but it does expunge all outstanding obligation on the property, including tax liens.
Except for federal.
Except federal, but usually, you can get the federal waiver. We haven't seen a problem with, with that. They, they don't, right, I mean, yeah. The national debt is more in a minute than the lien on a, on a piece of property.
I think I thought the recent federal budget was going to finish up with $339 billion deficit, which was down 14% or something.
Yeah.
$339 billion.
And we worry about Greece. The, but on a desirable piece of property, though, I must caution that if it looks like it's a buildable lot and it's in a good location, you may, you may want to send it to auction, because we still have an obligation to the taxpayers to try to, you know, get the most value out of that piece of property. Now, I think the North Ridge lot is non-conforming there. It's not a very big lot, even though it has good exposure on, on the road. I think the lot is very narrow and non-conforming to current standards in Alariah Township, which, which may make it more agreeable to sideliding that and keeping that area looking very nice over there. A lot, a lot goes into this, but it's serendipitous that you brought up, because Chris Panowski met, and we went over a lot of that. Let me also tell you about what he's doing with these liens, and I want, I want the taxpayers to know this, because sometimes they think maybe we're not as frugal with their money or tight-fisted as we should be if it was our money. The first thing Chris has been doing is he's looking around to see if some of these property owners that we have liens on property have other property, and we're going to try to lean up their other property to get the money that's been spent cleaning the properties that they didn't maintain or properly take care of. We're also looking to see if they have other assets, and you'd be surprised that a few people, more than, more than enough, have other assets, or they have a personal home that we can lean, because they didn't take care of their rental properties, and we're going to do that. And I'm glad you brought this up. I was going, I was going to have a conversation with you to let you know, because once we start this process, you know your fall's going to start right. But if you've, if you've had a rental property and you've let it fall into decay, and the taxpayers were forced to come in and spend 25 or 30,000 cleaning it up, and you have a personal residence, we're moving our lien to your personal residence. So they should come in and make a, make a deal and make some arrangements, and, and then if we find out there's personal assets that can be leaned, because those liens can be converted and we can go up to personal assets. funds.
You know, it's important for people to be good neighbors, too.
It is.
You know, people take a lot of pride in their property, they try to keep things up, and it just takes really one bad neighbor or a couple of bad neighbors, and, and it, you know, drives values down in the appearance of the neighborhood and just the quality of life. So it's, it's important for people to be good neighbors.
Well, I'm very pleased with the way things are going. Sometimes it appears slow, but there's a lot of on-the-ground work before the plane can take off. And, and, you know, the pilot gets all the praise, the ground crew isn't forgotten. But please ask them to be patient, and, but make sure they, they stay in contact with us so we have one file.
They are, yeah, they, they know that number.
Those folks I know, but I pass by there, they, Ted, you go by there every day.
Every day.
And they've, they've really...
They keep it in really good shape, at their own.
Okay. Thanks, Commissioner.
Thank you. This past Friday, I went to Church of the North Coast, they had a meeting for a thing that they're going to be doing, it's called Hope Over Heroin. This Saturday, from 11:00 to 1:00 at Veterans Park, they'll have a get-together for that, and then a two-day event in September. September 11th at Black River Landing at 7:00, and then on September the 12th at 2:00 at Black River Landing, then at 4:00 a march from 8th Street to City Hall. So anybody that's interested in getting, being a part of this event, you can, they do have a website, and it's hopeoverheroinlorraine.org. So if you want to be involved in that in any way, shape, or form, check the website, and you can do so. Other than that, I have no other report.
Thank you, Commissioner. Busy week on Friday. NOAACA had two meetings. I attended the External Affairs meeting. Most of the discussion was about our new Business Advisory Committee and our Citizens Advisory Committee, getting that all together, Don serving on one of those, I believe you were appointed to, Don Romanc, our Community Development Director. And then we had our policy meeting, which always takes a long time for discussion points about how the organization's going forward and what rules we're putting into place, and the concerns with if they're going to extend the transportation going forward because it runs out at the end of this month from the federal government. So we don't know what they're going to do, continuing resolution, if they're going to discuss how to actually move forward for MAP 21, but that's of interest to all of us who have road projects. Also, I attended the Farm Bureau, Lorraine County Farm Bureau Legislative Dinner on Monday evening. Always a great dinner, ladies.
Always the pork chop.
Always, that's the pork chop, exactly. A nice turnout. All our state representatives were there, our state senator. We were represented again by Don Romanc for our Community Development, Keith Bailey from our Solid Waste Department, myself. Chris Panowski spoke about the Land Bank. I turned that over to him, he did a very nice job. So I'd like to thank them for getting everyone together and discussing upcoming issues. I talked about this year where we had started funding the OSHU extension again out of the general fund for 4H availability. There were still some complaints out there from some of our, one of our state reps that, you know, we don't fund an extension officer now, you know, things we don't do. And he said, "They're giving more money from the state level." And as I explained to him afterwards, because I didn't want to really get into a discussion with everyone there, that the issue being that they would have left our local government fund here, we could still fund educators and such, we wouldn't have the issues. So don't tell me what the state's giving.
Let me, you know, and you had a brief conversation with me over that and some of your frustration. Next week, I'm working with the Budget Director. We're going to make a presentation to the board, and we're going to show the change in county revenues beginning early in the 2000s. And then we're going to also show the changes of what the state has done. And, and you're going to see that, you know, between, beginning around 2000 and '03 to the present, how our revenue streams have significantly changed, and how ours have been going like this, and the states have been going like this. And how much more money they've been taking out of the community while returning, or at least not holding up their end of the bargain with us on the funds they give to us. It, it's hard to calculate whether some of those funds have gone into other programming, but, you know, mental health is down, the MRDD is down, everything is down. So it's, I'm hard-pressed to find out where the extra money they've been taking out of the community has come back to the community.
It's not sitting in a bank account down there right now.
Yep.
The, but, you know, but clearly, the, the one variable that the state is not responsible for is our interest income, which the bond markets have been in, and truly in, in the sub-basement for a number of years. The yield curve hasn't emerged, and it's not visible in the bond markets, it hasn't been for some time. But we had the unenviable position in the late 2000s of having to live on our yield curve. Now, I will tell you that in, in the early part of the decade, and even in the 90s, we weren't victim of the yield curve. That was where we accumulated funds, when the yield curve was high, and we had carryover, and we funded projects, and when, when the yield curve declined. And it declines for everybody, given the restrictive nature of our investment vehicles. We were able to ride out those, those peaks and valleys because we, we saved a little bit and spent a little bit, and, and the revenues were supporting the operations. But towards the late 2000s, when we had a lot of cuts in, in local government funds, and of course, we had the cat tax issue, and, you know, the whole...
The population shift.
Well, the population shift was huge, okay? With the redistribution, with the redistribution. We had a, we had to start actually living and operating on, on the yield, on investments more fully, and so we're riding the lows, the low of, the low, low, excuse me, of that. And we kept thinking it was going to come out.
Thank you.
And it hasn't. And the difference right now is six or seven million dollars a year. Even if the bond market reemerges and, and starts to strengthen, we're still going to be a few years behind it. So it's not going to give us any relief right now. We thought, you know, three years ago that we'd be in a relief mode right now because the bond markets would pick up, and they haven't. They have not followed a natural trend. So, you know, we're going to show all of this and make a presentation, for what it's worth, of, of, of the things that, that have decreased, and the things that, I'll give you an example, the recorders' fees, when they doubled a couple of years ago. A lot of local people are paying a lot more to, to do their work with the recorder's office. That was your fault, right? No. The state doubled the fees. We didn't see a dime of that.
Well, state sales type's going up. The state raised the fee.
Well, we have that, too. So far since 2000, I think it's 2005, three-quarters of a percent. It wasn't 1 percent. They dropped half of that off, they reneged on the promise. You've heard me say that before. They passed 1 percent for two years, they were going to, two years it was going to end, there was a crisis. They quietly just ended only half of that 1 percent, kept another half percent. Let me equate that to dollars. Right now, that's $17 million coming out of our, our community, for that half, for that half percent. If you had the quarter percent they put in, what, a year ago, two years ago? That's another, now you're talking, you know, 23, 24 million dollars that, that isn't, isn't generating any local use, that's, that's leaving the community. While at the same time, they continue to mandate that we pay for more services, and everything's gotten more expensive, especially criminal justice. We're in an epidemic with, with, with drugs and, and issues that are affecting every community, and they're giving us less resources and taking more money. That's not a successful business model.
No.
It is for them.
I guess it is for them, but it's not for us. So we're going to, we're going to make a presentation and look at some numbers, and I don't think it'll be hugely revealing to us that are dealing with the issues, but it may be somewhat revealing for those that, that don't see it on an ongoing basis.
That's the end of my report.
And they certainly practice a reverse Robin Hood approach all the time down there. Had the opportunity to attend the opening of the new Brookside Middle and High School, and boy, how exciting that was. The, the schools were in very bad shape over there, the community really stepped up to the plate, obviously blending local dollars with state dollars to make that possible. Just wanted to commend the school board over there, Superintendent Folger, Mayor Hunter, Mayor Bring, some of my colleagues I worked with in the legislature. We really had to work through some, some serious wetland issues to actually make sure that we had a footprint there where we could build those buildings. But it all came together, and it was just a, a great opening. Looking forward to the Pulse event this evening for the Best of Lorraine County. Thursday will be the Township Association meeting, which I plan to attend, held in Wellington Township.
On next Tuesday, the 21st, 9:30, we'll have our Commissioner's meeting for the St. Bitch final hearing, for correspondence.
I move the reading be waived.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Mr. Lundey.
Aye.
Mr. Calo.
Aye.
Public comment?
Marilyn, did you want to, is Marilyn here? No. Anybody wishing to address the board this morning?
The library?
Yes, please. We put her to sleep with all that budget talk.
Come, you have to come up to the, one of the podiums here and...
I thought we were later, I'm sorry.
We're usually funny, not boring.
Not real funny.
Thank you. If you could just tell us your name and address, and then for the record, please.
Oh, sure. My name is Marilyn Clemens. This is my co-chair, Beth Plasse. We're from the Grafton Midview Public Library. Our address for the Friends is Post Office Box 287, Grafton, Ohio 44044.
Do you have our home address, or?
Is that all we need? That's fine.
That's good enough.
Thank you.
Okay. The reason we came here is we are members of the Friends of the Grafton Midview Public Library. I know Mr. Lundey has been out to our library. We're a very unique library. Mind you, we're friends, we're not unpaid employees, we're advocates for our library. Most libraries are, their boundaries are dictated by their village, city. Ours is dictated by the school district. We are a standalone library. We serve not only the Village of Grafton, but Grafton Township, Eaton Township, Carlisle Township, and part of Elyria. We are facing a huge digital divide in our district. Our computers are always busy. We've given you our sponsorship packet. We're trying to raise money through our fundraiser, Read Between the Wines. It is a wine and food tasting event, part of which is sponsorships. There's a sponsorship packet that gives you all the information you need. However, I think the most important piece of literature in your packet is the library's outreach. They do so much within our community, trying to face and address every need. Last year, we started doing the free lunch programs, a continuation from what the schools provide. No child is turned away. We have three sites, the library at the village, Eaton Township, and Center at Colonial Oaks. And they've been very well attended by children. Our problem is funding. There's, I'm not sure if you're aware, but the state has chosen to decrease funding to all public libraries from 2.2 percent to 1.6 percent. I was listening to you equate percent to dollars. It is, it's a small, okay, 0.6 percent, but the impact is huge.
Well, it's huge because the, the library funds come in with the local government funds.
Right.
They're separated by the orders. So we're, we're aware that the library funds have decreased throughout, not just in, in your library district, but in everyone in your county.
In the state, right. We just went to Ohio Library Council meeting, and it's pretty profound, the impact it's having.
And just so... 30 percent decrease. 2.2 to 1.6, almost a 30 percent decrease in funding from the state.
And just so you understand, before I left the legislature, we made the amendments on, on the floor and in Finance Committee to try to return it to 2.2. And there's a procedure down there called a tabling, so they ended up tabling because when you vote on a table, it's not an official vote.
Correct.
So that was always tabled, it never made sense to me, but...
Nor us. But anyway, we're charged with trying to bring that money in, and one of the ways is this Read Between the Wines. Last year, we were able, through our sponsorship, to give a check to the library of $8,840. $5,000 of that went to underwrite the programming. $3,800 went to the endowment fund, trying to secure the library's location in our community. This year, through the loss of grants, nobody's fault, parameters were changed by the foundation, we are now being charged to try and raise $10,000 for programming. So that's part of the reason we're here. We're just trying to reach out to everybody who might be willing to spot, make a sponsorship. There's different levels. And also to invite you to come to our event. It's really a pretty amazing event in Little Grafton on Thursday evening, 6 to 9. There's 300 people that come to this event, and...
October 1st.
October 1st, Thursday, October 1st. It's always the first Thursday in October, so, anyway.
Where is your facility in Eaton Town? I'm, I'm familiar with the one in Grafton, but I, I've never, I'm not familiar with the one in Eaton Township.
The, we serve lunch at the park there.
Oh, at the park?
At the park.
Okay. I thought maybe there was a facility I had missed down there.
No.
I was trying to get a visualization.
No.
So you, you only have the one facility in, in the city, in the Village of Grafton?
Correct. That, and then there's...
Colonial Oaks.
And then at Colonial Oaks, there's a, it's right by the pool, right?
Correct.
By the pool, Colonial Oaks.
If they're community center.
Yeah.
Okay, I got you.